Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governments in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid back down noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor McCreedy.
Present.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Cudell.
Present.
And Bailey Sawyers.
I'm here.
Thank you, all members of the committee are present.
Okay, want to move on to the first item more?
Right, the first item on the agenda is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in any item on the agenda?
We are not, so just move on.
That then takes us on to item two, which is the Dundee City Council 2020-2021 audits and accounts and audit. You have before you the draft audit statement of accounts for Dundee City Council, Dundee City Council charitable trusts, the Lord Provost of Dundee charity fund and the Dundee Trust. You also have the external auditors' report and the response to the auditors' report.
Okay. I think we'll first start with the draft statement of accounts, I don't know if there's an officer looking to say anything on that to start with. We'll take them in the sort of order that they're given. Bailey McPherson, you looking to come in?
I've got, I think Robert's wanting in, I think he'll give an overview, I've got a couple of questions, but Robert first maybe.
Thanks, thanks for that, then over to yourself then, Robert.
Thank you, convener, so I'm pleased to be presenting the audited accounts for last year. You'll hear from Audit Scotland shortly that they've given us a clean bill of health for the work. I think it is important to acknowledge that we've had quite a remarkable year in terms of the transactions going through the accounts because of Covid, so it's quite unusual in that respect and obviously we'll address any questions that you've got in that regard going forward, but I'll leave it at that, thank you, convener.
Okay, well then I'll just open up for questions, Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener, if you'll indulge me, I have three questions on unrelated things. I should first of all say, you know, it's quite difficult to make the accounts look exciting, but I think we can see, my question, nonetheless, they're very, they're well presented and I've no, I've no problem with the content at all, other than some of the narrative. I'll come on to that in a minute. My first question's actually, and it's really to get a hand on the current position now, on page twelve of the substantive page numbering. It talks about the capital receipts between twenty eighteen and twenty-one that were you, that were set aside for future transformation projects and that about one point one million had been used to further, sorry, to fund severance costs. So that left a balance of about three and a half million, and I was just really wondering what's happened since, what, where were we in relation to asset sales in the current financial year? Because I'm just conscious we've been in challenging times and I'm just really wondering where does that balance actually sit? I don't know, I'm not expecting it to the penny, to be honest, I'm just really wanting an idea of direction of travel on that.
Convener?
Sure.
So, so I don't have the exact figures to hand, I'm afraid, Bailey McPherson, but I'm happy, happy to provide that, but, but the, there have been some receipts in the course of this year, so that, the, so the capital receipts have come in, there haven't been a significant use of the sums for further severance during the course of this year, so that figure wouldn't have gone down much in that regard, but I'm happy to share with you the detailed figure out with, out with the meeting.
That'd be helpful, I'd just be interested to know as well as to of what we've had as capital receipts for such sales, what is intended to then add to what is set aside in relation to future transformation projects would be helpful, but I'm more than happy that Mr Emmett comes back to me. My second question, I suppose it's about the status of this, there's a, there's a jarring, if I'm being really honest with you, there's a jarring sentence in the, in the text, and it's on page nineteen of the substantive page numbering. So my question really is, could the text be altered? I'll tell you exactly what it is, because as you'll gather, I wasn't, I was none too happy about our decision to remove supported unregistered bus services, three of them at committee recently. So it's slightly jarred with me when I read in the one, two, three, fourth bullet point down, when we talk about reducing barriers to people using public or active transport, when in fact we have increased the barriers for these people in using public transport. So I was just really wondering, given that, if there would be any scope to actually just take that part of the sentence out, or, you know, given that this is a draft, I mean, I'm not going to move anything, but it wouldn't be appropriate, I think at the scrutiny committee anyway, but I'm just really wondering what officers' view of that would be.
Officer, care to make a comment?
So, so this, this is our final version, Bailey McPherson, I, I can understand the point you're trying to make from a political perspective, I think that's setting out the council's aspiration in, in this regard, in terms of the city plan, I think, considering that this is reflecting on the previous year, that's the council's policy position as I understand it, notwithstanding, I think, that there were differences of opinion around the future of the local bus services. So I'm not sure if I'm helping you in terms of where you want to go, I suppose you could propose, if you wished that it be amended, to reflect your, your views on that, but I'm mindful, this is the report on the previous year, and that's a decision that has been taken since Richard and his team completed their work.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult here, and I appreciate, this is obviously twenty twenty-one, I've made my point, I'll leave it at that, I'm not, I'm not asking for the text to be altered, but I just, but I would raise with officers the need for us to genuinely be looking at reducing barriers for people, I'm bringing something back to City Development Committee anyway, on the sixth of December regarding that very issue. My third and last question, if you'll indulge me, convener, is about the actually following bullet point in relation to spaces for people, and some of the, and it's really around the auditing arrangements in relation to, to this, both financial and in fact what's done there on the ground. The, some aspects of spaces for people's been very well received, twenty mile an hour, the three, or is it four, twenty mile an hour zones, it's four, isn't it, Douglas, Fintary, Rottweiler Ferry and, and the West End, they've been very well received. Some aspects of the cycle lanes have been fine, I've got some significant concerns about part of the cycle lanes in the far west of Perth Road, it's really in Nine Wells Avenue, I'm not at all happy about how it's been left in terms of lining and so on, and I've had complaints from both cyclists and, and drivers and pedestrians for that matter. So I suppose my, bearing in mind the whole kit and caboodle, and that's only this little section of Perth Road and Nine Wells Avenue, we're talking about a lot of money, three hundred and fifty-five thousand pounds, and I think the general consensus from cyclists, from pedestrians and drivers, is that this perhaps wasn't, I'm going to try and be polite here, this wasn't perhaps the best executed part of the project, and I should say, no one has had any, I've not had a single constituency that are not in favour of providing cycle lanes, cycle lanes rather, that's, that's not the issue, it's the execution of it. So I'm just really wondering if officers would be able to advise probably someone from City Development, if there's someone here, just really what the, Sustrans have a role in this, what is the sort of, how do they interact in relation to the financial overturn and the auditing of both the, the financial aspects and actually what's actually been put down on the ground?
So, convener, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
So, so I know that there is a, a regime for reporting the financial spend back in terms of what we've spent the money on, I'm not close enough to the actual works and what they look like on the ground, I don't know, convener, if there's anyone from City Development here who can answer that, but Neil Martin, I think, has got his hand up, so he can probably help with what's on the ground much better than I can, Bailey McPherson.
That's very helpful, thanks.
Good.
Thanks, cheers, thanks, Bailey McPherson. I think, I think it's a, a very reasonable question and very emotive subject, particularly in your word, Bailey McPherson, and in terms of that particular word, I'm aware that we are still having an ongoing review of, of what's happening, so if, and clearly it sits within my colleague Ewan McNoughton's domain in terms of spend, so I'd be keen to go back and have a discussion with you and, and some of my officers that have then designed the work and, and come back with a response in terms of the actual execution and how Sustrans view and audit that as well.
That's, that's very helpful indeed, I should say, there are aspects, and I'll be absolutely fair to the project manager, who has been very good at responding to things, but we'll have a, I have concerns about the lining in Nine Wells Avenue, the, the road space has been reduced, it's still within Scottish government guidance, it's not, I'm not suggesting it's not legal in any way, but nonetheless, I think the, the lining could certainly be improved. One last question, and you might not be able to answer this, Neil, but you could come back to me on it, and it's only because I went to the sub-marteners remembering Sunday service and walked up to its lane, Lynn will probably know the answer to this, there's a cycle lane up there, was that spaces for people because it's in really shoddy state? No, it wasn't, Lynn, it looked too old, because it really could do with a bit of TLC, the paint's all flaking, and it just needs a little bit of a smooching up. So you've answered the question, Lynn, so thanks for that, clearly it wasn't spaces for people, and, and, and that finishes my long drawn out questions, thanks, convener.
No problem at all, and I'd say to anyone else, I'm not looking to hold questions to two questions or, or limit people's time, it is about scrutiny and it's about, you know, getting the answers to questions that people are looking for. Can I maybe just, as what was supplementary seen, officers have agreed to look at the capital receipts and asked if they would also provide some detail of any outstanding capital receipts and the time delay between agreeing at committee the sale of the land and receiving the, and receiving the cash? Because I know that there has been times in the past where we've agreed to accept an offer on a piece of land and then that developer's come back and said his best to negotiate it down, some years later, so when we agree a sale, I would like the money in our bank, or I would like some mechanism of council going back and looking for a substantial amount more, given that land's likely went up in value, as opposed to developers looking to bring it down. Is there, is there any other questions before I come in with a few my own?
Councillor McCreedy's indicated, convener.
Cheers, Councillor McCreedy.
Thanks very much, convener, can I say that I share Bailey McPherson's frustration with the, the changes to, to the, to the, to the public transport service in the West End, I think that's, I think that's important to know, and I do have a few questions, convener, so I think you've already suggested that you might indulge me, so that's good news. First question is, throughout the accounts, we see references to leisure and culture Dundee being treated differently in these accounts as opposed to previous years, and I just say that I welcome and fully support the assistance that's been given to leisure and culture Dundee, which is by the council, which is cited as the reason for the change in use and the, the assistance is obviously as a result of the pandemic. Can I ask, are we, are we, are officers certain that this change in accounting practice won't have any impact on leisure and culture's independence from the council, which I do know that Oscar, their regulator, or one of their regulators are very keen on?
Convener, for me?
Sure.
So, so the, the factor that makes LACD an independent body, it's, it's its independent board, which we don't control, so that we do have council representatives on it, they don't have a majority position and it's open to LACD to make, determine its own matters. We've always been a significant funder through the management fee, and it's our agreement effectively to underwrite the finances that has changed it to being treated as subsidiary, but, but we're still not in a position where we can direct its affairs, and we are, it's continuing to operate its services in, within the same independent way, though clearly we, we, we want to work with them in delivering the city's objectives. So, so I'm not concerned about that, we will obviously be reflecting the government, the council's continued wish to support the services for the city, but clearly Covid and that support is an interim measure, not, 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 not a, not a long-term measure, and once we're through Covid, we should see, I envisage getting back to where we were before. I can see, convener, that Richard would like to come in.
Richard, is it Richard Smith, yeah? Richard?
Yeah, it was just a very brief comment on that, convener, to say that although Dundee City Council and there's a few other councils that have had to bring the leisure trust in as a subsidiary this year, there's a number of local authorities have had them as subsidiaries for a number of years, and I'm not aware that Oscar's ever had any issue with that, I think as Robert says, as long as they remain, indeed have an independent board, Oscar accepts that, that their trust operating at arms length from the council, so I wouldn't envisage there being any problems with that, although I would envisage next year for twenty-one, twenty-two, it will remain a subsidiary because obviously there's significant funding still going from the council to leisure trust in the coming year.
You, please, what's on from all that? Councillor McCreedy?
Yeah, I've got, I've just got a follow-up on that, that's, that's very helpful and I'm very reassured by that, so that's, that's good news. But if we are treating it as a subsidiary, I think we should be concerned about the ongoing closure of their major facility at Olympia, the costs of building, which will be reflected in these accounts, are part of the cost, are paying for the cost of building it, will be reflected in, the finance costs for that will be reflected, are reflected in these accounts which are before us. As you say, as a member of the council, I asked for a briefing from the managing director of leisure and culture Dundee and from the executive director of City Development on why the Olympia is currently closed and what the plans are to reopen it, and I have been politely refused. I would point out, the leader of the council implied in the media at the weekend that he knew what the problem was and that how it will be fixed. I'm just interested to know why I cannot be furnished with this information, and, you know, ask officers, are there two tiers of councillors in this council? Because I think it is important that we need to know the impact on leisure and culture going forward and on the finance costs which we have, whether it's appropriate that we're continuing to pay the finance costs on the building as a result of this closure, and we need to know whether the council should be seeking some redress from those who are responsible for building this eight-year-old building.
Okay, that looks like the chief executive, Mr Cogan's looking to come in and respond.
Thanks, convener, and thanks, Camster McCreedy, for your question. Just in response, and I'm happy to have a discussion with you out with the meeting, officers are still preparing the committee report, which we are intending to take to the City Development Committee at the start of December, that will outline clearly what the challenges are with Olympia, the proposed action that we're intending to take, and at that point, the financial cost of that. That will be published in the normal way, there will be a communication and there will be briefing with elected members, as we have tried to do with all matters, so I can give you the assurance that there is no completed report, Camster McCreedy, officers are still working with that, and it will be discussed with elected members through the normal channels that we've operated in recent months and in the past, but as I say, I'm happy to take that specific issue and have a discussion with yourself or the Labour Group separately.
Happy to have that discussion, but can I get a reassurance then that no councillor has received a briefing on what the problems are at Olympia and what the solutions are?
At this point, Camster McCreedy, I don't have the information that tells me what exactly the problems are with Olympia and what solutions we included within the elected member report.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to take that up with the chief executive out with the meeting. Also got another question, convener, if that's okay?
Yes.
At page one hundred and nineteen, under the heading Construction Services, it says that a provision has also been made relating to an issue on various roof replacement projects and a flooring project. I'm presuming that that relates to the report which is going to committee on Monday on roof tiles. Can I ask, given that this was partly recognised, not in the financial year we're dealing with here, but in January twenty twenty, why that wasn't, what, whether, sorry, whether that was reflected in the twenty nineteen, twenty accounts? And also, could somebody explain to me how the ongoing problem that suggested, or the solution that suggested in the report that may or may not be agreed on Monday, how that will be dealt with in accounts going forward? Because I'm just interested in, in what year the, the, the problems were created and where they will be accounted for, because, so just want, just want a little bit of information on that, and also, if somebody could give me a little bit more information on what the flooring project is, I would be very happy to hear that as well.
You, convener, respond then, Robert?
Thank, thank you, convener, so some, some good points in there, I think, Councillor McCreedy, if I can just deal with them in turn, if I can start perhaps with the, the report on roofs that will be considered by the council next week, that's something that I've considered carefully, we've shared with external audit, the report that's going forward, it's my view that that's work that the council can choose whether to undertake, we've no legal obligation to, and therefore we haven't provided for it in last year's accounts, but it now, if, if a decision is taken on Monday that the works go ahead, it will then be a commitment that will be provided for in the current year. We're in the fortunate position that we're anticipating an underspend in the current year, which will mean we can put money aside to deal with that going forward in the future. I'm not familiar, I'm afraid, with the specific point in relation to the floors, unless Neil Martin's able to help with that, we'll have to come back to you on that, but there is a specific claim which related to a, a roof for which there is a provision within the accounts that was made within Construction Services. I don't know off the top of my head whether that was carried over, so I'll have to come back to you on when that provision was made, which I'm happy to do so. So it's the same, it was a specific complaint that was made, that they had recognised there may be some liability for. I don't know if that answers your question, or you want me to go into more detail?
I think, I think if you're going to come back to me with more detail, I'm happy to, I'm happy to accept that, I've got.
Councillor McCreedy, can, can I maybe come in there and ask a question myself? Because it's kind of related to that. If we're saying we didn't need to make provision, how was that decision taken that we wouldn't make the provision for the roofs to be repaired, given that we're now advised it's four and a half million, or four point four million? And what part did, did whatever consider potentially legally that we have not met the standard that we agreed when we contracted with owner occupiers in particular? And, and I suppose even at that, how, do, do contract services take out any insurance against faulty work for any contractor, regardless of whether it was council or otherwise? So I'm wondering why there isn't a provision made in these accounts, given that we've got an equal pay, equal pay claim noted, and we've got the historic potential of child sex abuse cases being a burden against council? So just wonder if, if we could maybe get just a wee bit clearer to, to help in my mind, what's, how there's no provision made about him or forcefully in these accounts?
So, convener, good questions, I think, in terms of how the accounts work, so where we have got a claim against us, then we will have a, a liability, if we can quantify it, it'll be in as an amount, if it's, if it's unquantified, it'll probably be a contingent liability, so we, we, where we would have, for example, an equal pay claim against us, we know someone is making a claim and we need to provide for it. Where we have perhaps someone who's, who's raised an issue with a roof, we would have a provision against it. Where we've identified that we haven't followed the British standard, but there is no legal requirement to follow the British standard, and we're recommending that it's good practice to go back and correct that, but there is no legal obligation on us to do so, then I don't believe, and it's my, my view on this, and, and Mr Smith might want to come in with, with comments subsequently, but it's very much my view that we have not got an obligation to do these works. If we had claims against us for this, then, then there would have to be a provision for dealing with claims that might arise, and then we would probably be saying we're defending them, but, but at this stage, the council is looking, and the recommendations in the report are that it is good practice for the long-term safety of the building, not the short-term safety of the building, to do these works, and the recommendation coming forward is that we should be correcting them. No one's comfortable, I think, with, with the cost, but recognising that that's something we are deciding to do. So we haven't had claims against us by owner occupiers, and if we did, we would have to deal with them through the legal process, and I'm sure Mr Many could come in and comment on that aspect of it, if you want. So for me, it will be recognised in this year's accounts, if you make a decision that you are going to do it. If the council was, for example, not to determine to carry out the works, but felt that the roofing was sufficient standard, that it was not something they wished to do, we would not have an obligation to do it, and if someone made me the claim against us, we might have to then address that as and when it came forward. So that, the recommendation is that we do the works and at that time we would make the provision, convener. I hope that's.
I don't know if, if the briefing that I went to was recorded, but I seem to be given the impression that we were doing this on a legal recommendation as well as recognising that there was an error made. So, you know, if it's recorded, if someone goes back and looks at that and it didn't get told it, fine, I'll accept it, but I seem to think there was a legal obligation on us to do this, hence the reason that the paper arrived with it this week and the briefing done. So maybe, given that there was perhaps four or five different officers giving that briefing, it didn't come over as well as it could have, but that seemed to be hinted at least in the response to some of the questions. So I thought there was a legal obligation, and perhaps when we knew the magnitude of the thing, maybe early doors, some time back, then we would have been looking at as to whether there was a legal obligation and whether the account should have made reference to it.
So, convener, if I can just come in on that point, and Mr Many's on the call, so I'm not, I'm, I don't believe that briefings are recorded, but I'll maybe bring in Mr Many to clarifying the legal position. I think what's important for me is that your section ninety-five officer has given clear advice about what should be included. We discussed with Audit Scotland and shared with them at the appropriate time when the committee papers were finalised, a copy of the report, and the professional advice that would have been given at this point is that until committee take the decision whether or not the works are going ahead, and then it would be reflected within the accounts. But I'll perhaps bring in Mr Many, and just to clarify the position from his perspective as your chief legal adviser. So Roger? So Roger?
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Just to confirm, Convenor, that I'll be very happy to give legal advice, not simply to members of the scrutiny committee, but to all members of the Policy and Resources Committee. Given, however, that this is a public meeting and that legal advice is privileged, I would do that separately and on a confidential basis. But I'll be very glad to do that after this meeting and before Monday's meeting.
Okay, then. Thank you. Well, we'll move back to yourself then. Unless, sorry, Fraser, are you coming in on this particular item?
Yes, on this particular item, if that's okay, Convenor. Sorry to butt in, but my question's really on something Richard said in passing relative to what's on page 119. We obviously now know the full extent of the financial liability in relation to the roof replacement projects. It also refers to our roofing, sorry, a flooring project, sorry. And, you know, Richard alluded to that. I would be very grateful if the detail of that could just be circulated to all members of the scrutiny committee. Because, to be honest, it may not be to the extent of the £4.4 million liability in relation to the roof replacement, but it could be. I would just really like the detail of that to be circulated, please.
More than happy for that. I'm taking officers in agreement with that as well. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, back to yourself then, Councillor McCready. Thanks for reading.
Thanks very much. Just following up on what's been said. Given that it took 22 months for the whole council to be alerted to the problem with the roof tiles and the potential for additional costs, can I ask officers on the call whether there are any other items which are currently being kept secret from councillors and which will impact on accounts in future years? We need to know that all the relevant provisions have been made in the accounts before us before we could agree them today.
Are you looking to come in then, Mr Cogan?
Yeah, thanks, Bailey Keenan, and thanks, Councillor McCready. So I'll allow your Section 95 officer just to give you advice in terms of the accounts that are being presented to you today. But just to confirm, there was a large amount of investigation that went into the initial complaint, which is fully outlined within the report that you will consider on Monday night, and also the reasons why there was a delay in this being reported. So officers have brought this back once the problem has been considered, once we were very clear about the magnitude of that problem, and once we were very clear about the level of action that was needed to be taken. But, Convenor, if you're in agreement, I'll pass over to Mr Emmett to provide you his professional advice as your Section 95 officer on the level of reserves in the accounts that are presented before you today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Robert?
So, Convenor, I suppose just in terms of Councillor McCready's specific question, everything that we are aware of has been disclosed. The accounts reflect, and Mr Smith will speak to this shortly, hopefully, the provisions we need, I believe, need to be disclosed. This is a matter that is a decision for the council forthcoming. I'm not aware of any other issues along this line, Councillor McCready, that we will be coming, that we will be coming back with. So this is, to the best of my knowledge, something that this will deal with the matter, and that will be the end of it. There's nothing else that we need to be telling you. Otherwise, we will be declaring it to you. We're not trying to keep anything. The report that's before you next week is in the public domain. And as Chief Executive said, we've shared that in advance with auditors, so they're aware of the position.
Okay, Councillor McCready, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, thanks very much, very happy to hear that, get that reassurance. I think that's very helpful.
Any other questions?
No, that's me for the time being.
Okay, can I maybe ask a couple of questions? I think it's page 124, and I'm not sure whether I'm substantive or otherwise. In relation to the overdraft, I think the figures have went up substantially from last year. I wonder if anybody can give us a bit of an insight as to these figures?
Convenor, I'm not sure if it's page 127 on the substantive pages under Bankover Draft, section three.
Yeah. Maybe not the question I wanted to get to. So it's me that's done a few scribbles on a bit of paper here that maybe not too focused. This may be known as clear as I should have made it. I may come back to officers on that particular question. I'll move on to another one then. And page 62 mentions the voluntary early retirement scheme and the number of people that have went and how these costs can be met within a year. And I wonder if officers outside the meeting can give us some details in relation to? There looks to be one there at £153,000. And wondering, you know, as it's got to break even over that year, if they could sort of give elected members of the committee some kind of detail of how paying out that level of money delivered that substantial saving within that sort of short period of time? I know that others that we've let go, it could be somewhere in the region of, it looks like £9,000 worth. But that seems to be an extremely high figure. And I wonder how we would make that level of return?
So, Convenor, if I may?
Yeah.
The, all of the exit packages were agreed in accordance with the policy that was agreed by, I think it was the COVID Recovery Group last August, who set out a V R scheme to operate through till the 31st of March of this year. That required a payback to be met. There was a panel comprising the chief executive and the head of HR and the executive director of Corporate Services, who considered all of the panels, all of the applications, and agreed them on the basis of the financial return. So I obviously can't talk about that example. I'm happy to have a further discussion with you out with the meeting if that will be helpful. But all of the packages met that test that we had set. And that is obviously, I know that that has been subject to scrutiny by the external audit team, as well as that scenario they put a particular focus on.
So I'd be right in saying one individual got £153,000 to leave the business? In a voluntary early to retirement package?
So, Convenor, if I can just come in on that point, the table five is the costs associated with exit, but it's shown as the IAS 19 employee benefit. So when you actually look at the real costs, it's not 1.4 from a cash perspective, it's 1.3. So depending on the IAS 19 impact, it wouldn't be that the individual has left with £153,000 of severance costs. But as Mr Emmett has said, the clear policy that was agreed was a payback period of up to one and a half years. And what I can do is give you that assurance that we've applied that policy, which committee agreed last year when considering every application. So there's a wee bit of a difference between the cost in the table and the actual value of the pension strain and what the individual would have received.
So, I mean, obviously, there's a process and it's been agreed. And, you know, there isn't an elected member on that, so there is no real oversight. So then, can I ask the auditors whether they look at that particular process and agree that, you know, what on the face of it looks like, you know, one person getting £81,000 and another person getting £153,000? Are they comfortable that there is a process in place that's robust in every possible way?
Yeah, happy to come in on that, Convenor. Yes, as part of our audit, we would always look at the high-value exit packages and then also just pick up a sample of others to make sure they comply with the policy. So as the chief executive said, the council's policy was that the payback period should be one and a half year. So we reviewed those cases and confirmed that that is the case. So that taking the high value on the £153,000, you would save that amount of money within at least 18 months. I suppose as chief executive said, it's not £153,000 in cash terms, so that includes pension payments, future pension payments. And also in terms of the payback period, you're comparing it to not only their salary costs, but also their own costs. So obviously, the council will be making national insurance contributions, pension contributions for that individual. So that's what we've looked at. We've looked at the calculation. We've confirmed that prior to that being approved, that someone had checked that calculation, made sure the payback period was less than 18 months. Obviously, I can't get into the specific, that case, but I'm sure details of that could be provided. So that's part of our audit, is we pick off those exit packages and confirm it's within the policy that's been approved. I don't know if there's any further questions on that in terms of work we do on it.
Okay, that's it, that. The other question would be in relation, I think it's page 92, is unusable and uncommitted reserves, I think. If someone can tell me what the figures are. Is it one point that makes reference to one note and then one note sends you to another? So I'm wondering if officers are just in a position to tell me what the, what these figures are? Sorry, Robert, you're on mute.
Sorry, Convenor, I was just wanting to clarify what exactly you were, what figure you were looking for?
What's the bottom line? What are the, what are the uncommitted or? They're usable and unusable reserves? I'm just looking for a figure. Perhaps maybe, just given that it's a public meeting, perhaps maybe some level of explanation on these, just in case there's members of the public who'll get a better understanding of what council has in uncommitted reserves and what the unusable reserves would be. Because everybody thinks if you've got something, you should be able to use it.
I think, I think it's probably, I'm just trying to find the right figures for you. The, it's important, and on page, I suppose, I would refer you to page, I'm just trying to see which page it is now. Are you on page 93, where it's showing the? Total general fund balances? I'm on substantive page 93.
Yeah, could be. One note makes reference to send you another page, makes you reference to? If I look back at the pages again, just bear with me a minute. One note sends you back to notes nine and 10. So I think it's caused 92 sends you back to page nine and 10. I'm just looking for what these figures are.
So I think the best page to look at is at the top of the substantive, page 93, Convenor, where you'll see it's got total general fund balances of 50.5 million. And it outlines how those are broken down between an uncommitted general fund balance of just over eight million. And then above it identifies the committed or earmarked balances that we are holding against that. The most significant of which is the 19 million that we've held against future COVID costs. And it includes, obviously, some of them. You'll see there's a brief narrative about, against them, but it includes some which are committed because they're ring-fenced funding. So I think that's probably the best place to look if you're trying to get a sense of the overall reserve. So whilst there is a significant increase, and that's because we've got a large amount of additional money right at the end of the financial year, a large part of that is committed. And we've already talked about, for example, the support that we're providing on an ongoing basis to L A C D, which will be of the order of £3 million in the current financial year.
Okay. Thanks for that. Is there any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on then to the charitable trusts. Can anyone speak to that, or will we just go for questions?
Happy to take questions, Convenor.
Is there any questions on charitable trusts? I don't know if this is the one that's the recommendation of, as to whether, I think it's 0.5 or something, is one of the recommendations in some of these papers around potentially winding up? Can somebody make a comment on that?
I'm happy to come in on that, Convenor. The, one of the recommendations in the main audit report is we consider whether or not there is an ongoing requirement to continue with those charitable funds. Mr Manzi, I think, had his hand up and perhaps provide a bit more detail.
Okay, George?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I think the specific recommendation in the external auditor's report is about the Dundee Trust, which is under item 2A4 of the agenda. And the Dundee Trust has been dormant for some time now because the funds that the trust had have all been expended. And after a certain period of time, which I believe is three years, the regulator, the charity's regulator, Oscar, will start asking questions about the future of the trust, and that remains dormant. So I think we've agreed with the auditor's recommendation that we'll have to take a view on the future of that trust in the near future.
Sounds fine, George, thanks. Okay, any other questions on that report? Okay, thank you. And the Lord Promises Charity was the next one. Any questions on that? No? Okay. And Dundee Trust? No questions? And external auditor, Victor, will better let you in?
Thank you, Convenor. So I'll try not to speak for too long, but I'll give you a quick overview of the report. So in your papers today, you have an annual audit report. Ready on some of the comments. And also a cover letter that just explains the audit completion process. So if we come first to the annual audit report cover letter, that's included pages 211 to 235 of your papers. So this letter basically explains the steps required to finalise the audit and for the engagement lead Fiona Mitchell-Night to certify the annual accounts. Mr Emmett already touched on this, but as explained in paragraph one of the letter, we have issued unqualified audit opinion on the council's accounts this year. And we also have no other issues from audit that we're required to report in audit certificate. Similarly, for the council, for the charity side, we've issued clean audit opinions this year. And you see the copies of audit certificates for the council and the charities included as appendices to the cover letter. And these have also been included within the accounts that you just considered as a general. The rest of the cover letter explains the, sorry, I'm echoing back a wee bit. The rest of the cover letter is we're required to comment on in our annual audit report and also sets out the assurances we require by to certify the audit. I suspect this is probably familiar to most members from prior years or other committees that you sit on to go through each of these paragraphs. However, I would draw your attention to paragraph six. This explains that the committee are required to alert us to any issues that could impact on our opinions on annual accounts that we've not already been made aware of during the course of the audit. For example, these could be suspected frauds or non-compliant legislation that has not yet been brought to our attention. I therefore ask if there are any of these issues, you make us aware of them during the committee. We've obviously touched already on the roofing repairs, and we have been made aware of that last week and considered that. But if there are any other issues that you think might be relevant to audit, I would ask that you make us aware of them during the meeting, so we can consider them before concluding the audit. Okay, if we move on now to that show annual audit report, this is included at pages 237 to 294 of your papers. Pages 241 and 242 set out the key messages from the audit. So this is basically an executive summary of the key points from last year's audit. So I briefly talk you through these and then just touch upon the findings from financial statements audit that were required to report to committee prior to approving the accounts for signing. So points one to three of the key messages cover the financial statements audit. And this reflects the fact that we've issued clean audit opinions on the council's accounts and the charter's accounts. I've obviously just discussed this as part of the cover letter, so I won't go over that again. But I would highlight at point four, which confirms that the audit accounts will be certified in line with the revised deadlines for this year's audits. The extended deadline permits us to sign off the accounts up to the end of November. And we propose to do it, sign off the accounts tomorrow, assuming they're approved at today's meeting. The next two sections of the key messages cover financial management and financial sustainability. Financial management relates to financial position reported for 2021 and also the general financial management range is in place. While financial sustainability looks towards the future and the longer-term financial position of the council, including the long-term financial planning arrangements. I suppose as you'd expect, the key messages in the financial management section are dominated with impacted COVID with impact of Covid-19 on the council's finances during the year. And you see there that we've included details of specific impact of the pandemic on the council's activity during 2021, and also level of additional funding provided to meet the extra costs associated with council's response to the pandemic. I think for us, the important thing to highlight here is that while the financial outturn for the year and the year-end reserve levels that we've just discussed look very healthy, the underspend reported relates to registered activity during the year. So therefore, these underspends that you're seeing for 2021 will have a knock on effect on expenditure in future years, when the activity that was originally scheduled for 2021 is actually undertaken. And so this also is relevant to the slippage in the capital programme. You'll see that 56% of the planned project expenditure for 2021 was deferred due to the Covid-19 restrictions on construction works during the year, but obviously that's going to be picked up in future year. So I suppose the point to get across there is that although you've got underspends and that's impacting on your reserve levels, that money's going to be needed in the future. So we need to consider that. So moving on to financial sustainability and linked to those comments that I've just made, the key thing there we would highlight is that a significant proportion of those usable reserves at the year end will be required to meet the ongoing financial pressures. And Mr Emmett's already touched upon some of that, has ring fenced or earmarked for particular expenditure in future years. The other thing to highlight is that obviously there's been a significant amount of additional Scottish government funding provided in 2020, 21, some of it towards the very end of the year. And it's unlikely that this is going to continue in future years. Therefore, it would be vital that once there's more certainty about the impact of the pandemic, that you review your long term financial plans to make sure they reflect the actual ongoing costs of the pandemic, and also there's obviously a big impact on income streams in various areas, so how that's going to be impacted. We've discussed this with officers, and we kind of accept that at the moment, it's probably not sufficient certainty to be preparing a long term financial plan that you might then have to go back and immediately revise. And we've agreed that at appropriate time, you'll look to save those and make sure that we've got long term plans. We know that the key messages cover government financial plan through and this is a term that is proposed during the year, updated satisfactorily. And we've also highlighted there that management can come to include annual account, so that a wee bit of feedback, but if you can hear me okay. Come to annual account provides a fair and balanced analysis of the performance during the year, and that includes the impact of Covid-19. The final six of key measures covers best value, and that includes the council's response to the best value assurance report published by the Council Commission September 2020. We accept that the best value assurance report was issued fairly recently, so it's kind of early days to follow up on that. But we're content that good progress has been made in implementing the agreed actions despite the impact of Covid-19. We're also aware that a further update and progress against the action plan is due to be taken to committee before the end of the year. So we'll consider that as part of our 2122 audit and report back on that next year. We've also commented in the best value section on the council's service performance over the last year, and how this was impacted by pandemic. Obviously, that's a significant impact on a number of areas, and we particularly highlighted there that the challenges faced by the council in tackling underperformance linked to levels of poverty and equality have been exacerbated by the impact of the pandemic. So we would anticipate that that's going to continue to impact on performance in these areas in future years, and we'll obviously consider that performance in that context and the additional challenges presented by the pandemic. If I now move on to exhibit two on pages 248 to 250 of your papers, so this report says significant findings in financial statements audit that were required to report to committee prior to approving the accounts for signing. You'll see in the table that includes both issues identified during the audit and the agreed resolutions to address these. So I should say that we are content with the resolutions agreed, but members should make sure that they are happy with the resolution of each point prior to approving the accounts for signing. I will briefly touch on the two points that resulted in accounting adjustments to the unaudit accounts. So point three in exhibit two actually relates to change in accounting advice. So it's for the accounting treatment of the coronavirus payments for health and social care staff. So at the time that the unaudit accounts were being prepared by George and his team, the advice was that these should be accounted for as 2020, 21 transactions, and that's due to the fact the announcement regarding these payments was made by the First Minister during the year. However, subsequent advice clarified that as the actual payments and the funding provided by the Scottish Government both fell after the 1st of April 2021, then they should actually be accounted for as 2021, 22 transactions, and therefore shouldn't be included in the 2020, 21 accounts. So it's a bit of a technical accounting point, but basically the advice changed, so they said to be stripped out. So management's processed that adjustment to correct this in the audit accounts, and that's detailed in the resolution for point three in exhibit two. The other point I would highlight is point four in exhibit two, which relates to credit balances within the short term debtors' balance and accounts presented for audit. As part of our testing, we identified there's some credit balances in the debtor system that had been stripped out of the short term debtors' balance and accounts, and this resulted in both the short term debtors' and short term credits' balances being understated by 0.6 million on audit accounts. Again, management's corrected this in the audit accounts. So this resulted in the short term debtors' and short term credits' balances both increasing by 0.6 million. However, I would stress that this doesn't actually affect the bottom line net asset figure on the balance sheet, as the increase in the debtors' balance and increase in the credits' balance effectively cancel each other out. So if you're wondering why that's not changed from the audit accounts, that's the reason. So those are the only two points I would specifically want to highlight, but happy to answer any questions on other points. And as I say, you should be content with the resolution of each of those. Similarly, the points from the audit of the charities are set out in exhibit four on page 253 of your papers, and there's obviously been some discussion of them already. But again, we would ask members to confirm that they're happy with the resolution of each of those points before approving those accounts for signing. The very final part of the report I've just got to draw members' attention to is the action plan at appendix one on pages 285 to 207 of your papers. So this sets out the recommendations for improvement from the 2020, 21 audits, and it also includes the agreed actions and timescales to address these. Obviously, monitor progress against these as part of our 2122 audit and report back on them as part of next year's annual audit report. As I say, convenor, those are the only areas that I wanted to highlight in our report, but could I just recall our thanks to Robert, Paul, George and the team for the support they provided during this year's audit, that we was grateful for the patience in dealing with audit queries, but I think particularly this year with everything else that's been going on, it's been a particularly intense process to get it done, and pleased to see that we've managed to make the revised timescale. I'll hand back to you now, convenor, but myself, or Neil O'Connor, who's the lead senior auditor for the audits, would be happy to answer any questions that members have on the report or on the completion process for this year's audit. Thank you, convenor.
Good. Richard, I'll thank by starting thanking yourself and your team for the efforts that are put in, obviously, and acknowledge the work of our own team. I do agree with yourself, the year after year they do a great job getting things ready in the best of can, it's difficult working from home and the way things are having to be done at the moment, but well done to our team as well. So thanks very much for that. I'll open it up for questions to Richard. Is there any questions? Looks like you're getting away scot free, and it was just the officers that got it earlier, Richard.
I'm happy with that, nobody's got any questions. It's a good report that you're not getting any questions.
Very good. Well, hopefully, you seen that there was two audit, that there was two scrutiny going on earlier. Okay then, that really just leaves me to thank everyone for the, no, there's another item, isn't there? Which is, the final item was the audit response and agreeing that. Is there any questions that we're happy to agree that? Happy to agree it. Okay, that leaves me closing the meeting then. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon. Okay, I don't do anything I wouldn't do. Thanks again. Bye.
Thank you.
Cheers. Thanks very much, all the hard work. Thank you.
Thanks, final.